I've already had, I bought everybody cupcakes, but I've eaten them all.
Uh.
Get them downtown.
What's your grandpa name?
Uh, grandpa. Kind of original. I thought of them all by myself. Debbie's Mammy, that was her mother's.
Good evening, I called to order this October 4th meeting of the Winston Salem City Council. In pursuant to the policies and procedures adopted by this city council relative to virtual meetings, I've determined that it's not feasible for the city council and I to meet together physically tonight. And due to the pandemic, all council members are participating virtually. Council members will vote by roll call vote. A member will be recognized, they'll raise their hand and state their vote. Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Larson.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Monday.
Present.
Councilmember Cipio.
Present.
Mayor Protem Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Here.
And Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Thank you, we have everyone here tonight. Would you please join the city council and me in a moment of silence? Thank you very much. Tonight's agenda of the city councils comprised of the following items. There are six zoning petitions, there are two U D O text amendments. There's an item related to the truest stadium lease agreement. An item related to the Northwest Child Development Center's Chapter 11 bankruptcy reorganization plan. An item related to the 2021 redistricting process. Two items related to boards and commissions as well as a closed session. The zoning petitions, the U D O text amendment, and the truest stadium lease agreement are listed as public hearings. And when these public hearings are called, persons will be given an opportunity to speak virtually. If there is opposition to the zoning petitions, the proponents and the opponents will each be given 15 minutes for presentation and three minutes for rebuttal. If no one wishes to speak, I'll close the public hearing and the city council will consider the item. Written comments were accepted on these public hearing items until 24 hours prior to the start of tonight's meeting. We're televising this meeting live tonight on TV 13, and it will be replayed on Tuesday at 9:00 a.m. and again Wednesday at 9:00 p.m. Copies of our agenda as well as videos of our previous meetings are always available online at the city's website, www.cityofws.org, and just click on the watch meetings online option. Does Kenny have the first item, please?
Item Z1, continuation of public hearing on the site plan amendment of the Housing Authority of the City of Winston Salem for changes to replace a 120-unit apartment building with multiple apartment buildings containing A1 units. Property is located on the east side of the Simon Avenue, between East 12th Street and East 11th Street, located in the east ward. Planning board recommends approval of petition. This item was continued from the September 7th, 2021 city council meeting.
Thank you, I do want to recognize Councilmember Cipio, who I understand would like to have another continuance on this item, so Councilmember Cipio.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening colleagues on the city council. Yes, Z1, I would like to have this continued. There will be a community meeting with the residents surrounding the Brown School and Choice. This is a Choice Neighborhood Grant. There have been lots of questions that have come up, and we're having a community meeting with the neighbors, the residents, and any other council members who'd like to come to get updated on exactly what is going to happen with the Choice Neighborhood project, and how this fits in as well as other critical timetables. So with that, and that meeting is going to be next week. So at this point, I'd like to move to continue it until our November meeting.
All right, it's motion to continue this to November 1st, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? Oh, excuse me, Mayor Protem Adams?
Yes, Mayor and staff and Mr. Garrity, just so the council know, how does this fit into the timeline? I mean, are we gonna be okay? I would hate for us to jeopardize, well, our involvement anyway, but how does the timeline look for this?
Mr. Garrity, could you comment on that?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the city council. I need to check with Hawes and their lead contractor. I know they were getting ready to break ground. Aaron, do you know, do you have any?
Yeah, I'm glad to share some information there, Lee. Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. We're still working on the environmental assessment for this piece of property. There's some contaminated soil there, we're working through that. There's some additional steps that need to be done on that, so given that, I don't think this is gonna throw us out of whack, knowing that we've got a way on that environmental assessment to go through, so I don't think it's gonna throw us too big of a wrench, Mayor Protem.
And once we get the environmental study, can staff provide council with a timeline of what the project is going to look like as it advances? I know when we did hole six and all of those, we never got a timeline. I think a timeline is important for the community as well, to end the council, to know what is going to happen, when it's gonna happen, and the players, okay?
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? If not, we'll go to roll call, yes vote, continue this item to November 1st. Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Monday?
Aye.
Councilmember Cipio?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Thank you, that item is continued. Item Z2?
Item Z2, continuation of public hearing on zoning petition A B B LLC from H V dash S to G B dash L. Property is located on the north side of Old Waukato Town Road, east of Davis Road, located in the northeast ward. Planning board recommends approval of petition. This item was continued from the September 7th, 2021 city council meeting.
There, I understand there have been some changes made to the conditions. Mr. Murphy, you wanna touch on those and then we'll do the public hearing?
I'm just making sure I'm pulling up the right.
Yeah.
Right slide show here, yes. Okay, yes, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. The change since this item showed up in your packet was that the petitioner and owner, they have agreed to remove the following uses, transmission tower, the uses habilitation facility A, B, and C, the use clubber lodge, and the use micro brewery or micro distillery. So I believe the city clerk included in Granicus the revised ordinance and/or permit that has those revised lists of uses in there, but these were the uses that were removed from the request, and for some reason, I'm not on that slide, so.
Yeah, it's showing up there, Mr. Murphy.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, very good. Well, let's go to the public hearing. Mr. Murphy, is anyone signed up in opposition to this item?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, there is no one here in opposition.
All right, thank you, I'll therefore close the public hearing, and I'll recognize Councilmember Burke. You ready for a motion or if you'd like to have an additional presentation?
Uh, no, I'm ready for a motion. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem Adams and members of the council. I move for approval of one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and two, W dash 3490 with the revised ordinance and revised permit.
Second, McIntosh. Thank you, motion is second. Any further discussion? All right, we'll go to the vote, a yes on this approves this zoning petition. Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Monday?
Aye.
Councilmember Cipio?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh?
Aye.
And Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Good, thank you, and thank you, Councilmember Burke, I know you worked hard on this item, so congratulations. Item Z3?
Item Z3, continuation of public hearing on zoning petition of City of Winston Salem from Forsyth County R S 20 dash S and A G to Winston Salem R S 20 dash S and A G. Property is located on the southwest side of Sawmill Road, south of Union Cross Road. Located in the southeast ward, planning board recommends approval of petition. This item was continued from the September 7th, 2021 city council meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy, do we have anyone in opposition to this zoning?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we do. We actually have someone who, well, actually, I believe they may have a microphone now. At one point, it wasn't, we weren't able to communicate them, but we have two folks that we know of that are signed up in opposition, Scott Pegram and Katie Trebelski. And I believe with Katie Trebelski, there are other neighbors that are there.
Right, and we are the city on this, we're simply changing from county to city zoning, so we'll just skip the proponents' presentation. What you'd like to say a word on it, Mr. Murphy?
No, Mr. Mayor, you are correct, we are, this was a property that was annexed back during the summer, and this is just converting the previously approved county zoning to city zoning.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll go then to the individuals who are opposed to this, if you would call the first one.
Yes, Scott Pegram, if you would unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record, and provide your comments.
Uh, yeah, Scott Pegram, 2335 Union Cross Road in Winston Salem.
Go ahead.
My statement is full of questions, actually, so maybe these have been addressed or will be addressed by the group that is meeting at Freedland Church tonight. But one has a current impact study on traffic, on the impact of additional traffic, and also the potential flooding being submitted and reviewed. Number two, I'm concerned about the ability of the police staff and also the schools in the area to support the hundreds of students who potentially would enter the school system if a development on that property is approved in the future, which I understand that's in the works. And my last question is, for the developer, if there is a representative of Leo Terra there, if they can tell us actually what their, what their plans are, what type of development this will be, will it be similar to what they're building on this old road? And that's, that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pegram. Again, the city council is only considering changing from this county zoning to city zoning. It's not dealing with the particular issues that you brought up, but we'll be more than happy to try to get you answers to those questions. That's next speaker.
Yes, Katie Trebelski and other neighbors, I believe, are, is the group that Mr. Pegram referred to that are at Freedland.
Yes, thank you for your time, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, yes, thank you for your time. So myself and two other neighbors would like to speak. I'm gonna come in the end and sort of sum it all up, and Ms. Brady will be first. Just sit right here.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, if you'll state your name and address.
Can you hear? Okay, my name is Cheryl Brady, I live at 240 Union Cross Road, Winston Salem.
Thank you.
I'm 73 years old, and I have lived in this area all my life, all my life. My great-grandfather, Leon Charles, came home from the Civil War and farmed this same land that our family farms today. Our roots are here, and our ancestors wanted us to be here or we would have grown up in the city. I would like to ask by a show of hands, how many of you have personally visited this property? Anybody?
I've been there many times.
Can you show me again, everybody, one time, I couldn't see. How many have been on this property?
I think you could go ahead and continue your comments, ma'am.
Nobody?
No, there's, there's.
Mr. Tyler, you've walked on the property.
Go ahead with your presentation.
Okay. Okay. Did you notice that all the trees have been removed? Did you see all the rocks? Martin Marietta wanted to put a rock where they're not many years ago. My father received a continuous pay from them, and then it was not approved, so he gotta keep the money. We can't figure out why Leo Terra bought the land straight out for $2.9 million. How did they know this land would become a city? Or whatever you are trying to do. We would like to see a nice rest home built there, or at least lots of less density. This site plan was approved 14 years ago, and nobody knew how it happened. There was no notice put out on the, to inform the citizens. According to State Statute 160A dash 364, you need to hold a public hearing. No one can show that that was done. This process needs to be rezoned or redone at the very best. We know that the property owners wanted to sell the land to buy the money between their eight children. So after 14, 15 years, they sold the land to a, at a reduced price to their son-in-law, who stated he wanted to build a farm, race farm, and a home for his family. Within a month, he resold the land to Leo Terra Development Company for $2.9 million. There's approximately 20 houses on Sawmill Road and 20 houses on Woollett Road. Both these roads have a bad curse that entered into them, and we don't want to see anybody having wrecks that they have. Are you all gonna fix those roads? We're telling you that this, that this approval will be bad for all our citizens in this area. The roads, the traffic problems, the water and erosion problems, the school attendance problems, and the historical aspect of this property make it a very special case. You have all pledged to help all citizens of Winston Salem. You will voice our concerns, you will advocate for the well-being of all citizens, and to make Winston Salem a better place for all people to live, work, play, and pray. Think about this, if this was in your neighborhood, would you be concerned? That's all we're asking you for. We are very concerned about this, this whole thing. We don't, nobody knew about it, nobody's given us any straight answers about it, and the only thing we're worried about is our neighborhood, where we've lived, where I've lived for over 70 years. I don't, I just want it to be right and fair, and I don't want people to be hurt in the process. If they go over there and start blasting and wailing dry around here like it did at industrial park, you're gonna, you're gonna pay for that too, and plus, the rest of it is just the fact that people around us have been annexed for 12 years, I think, and they still don't have water and sewer. So what, when you approve this stuff, you all have to come in and do this stuff. You can't just promise it and just leave everybody sitting with no water. People's wells went dry whenever that other development happened. We're just concerned, that's all, we're just concerned people. We just want your input, and you want, we want you to take our input, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there another speaker?
Next is Mr. Moore.
Good evening, Mr. Moore and councilman. My name is James Moore, I live at 2215 J D Drive in Winston Salem. My property is directly parallel to the entrance to this proposed development. And it's my understanding if this is approved by city council, then you become the city, becomes a regulator of compliance to the plan. And I think that's a true statement. And if that's a true statement, then the city, and we've been told that the traffic today wasn't needed, well, the city's gotta have at least 20 times more power than we got. Convinced North Carolina Department of Transportation that we need a stoplight at the intersection of Sawmill and Union Cross. Personally, I've almost been hit there three times, and we don't even have the development there yet. There's also been a fatality at the other end of Sawmill on Gumtree, and there's been a light there. So regulation of compliance to the plan, I think, would include the concern that all of you would have for the safety of the citizens of Winston Salem.
Yes, this is Katie. Thanks again for your time, I'll just sum it up. I understand, we all understand that this meeting is just for city ordinance going from county to city, and a lot of this neighborhood and a lot of the other erosion schools and things like that are maybe irrelevant. However, we want you guys to know that we are all here, that we have a smaller crowd tonight, we are concerned. So in the future, when this development go forward, we will hopefully work with Mr. Taylor, and he'll be on our side and get some of these straights and traffic and things like that together. So that being said, by the way, my name is Katie Trebelski, I'm at 3950 Sawmill Road. I am building a very nice sized house, million dollar plus home on Sawmill Road, and this property is adjacent to my property. And according to the site plan, there's gonna be hundreds of houses right behind me, so that's why I'm here. Again, I know we're talking about those city ordinance. If this property does go to the city ordinance, we do understand that that property will then be, have more regulations, and that builder will have to abide by more regulations. So I think we're okay with that. But that being said, all of you, we just hope that and pray that you will be on our side when it does come to traffic and schools. Once we can move forward in this process, that we will be here and hope that you'll be on our side when other things that we actually can control come up. The last thing I want to say is to Mr. Taylor and other council members, if you can please keep us informed of what's going on. This was given to the city back in June, and no one knew about it. And that's why a lot of us are upset, because it was just given to the city and no one knew about it. So that being said, please be transparent with us, and please let us know what's going on. And, you know, we just are very concerned, and like Ms. Brady said, so thanks again for your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Murphy, is anyone else wish to be heard on it?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I am not aware of anyone who had actually signed up in opposition. I don't know if there's anyone else on, on the Zoom.
There must be.
Is anyone else on the call that would like to be heard? We have about two minutes left. Hearing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed then. And, Mr. Murphy, would you give us the report at the planning board?
Can you guys hear me?
It must be a really long lag.
Did, Mr. Trebelski, did you have another, something else you want to add?
Mr. Mayor, I'm here, ready to give the presentation, but I'm not sure what's going on.
Hang on just a second. Mr. Murphy, can I hear you?
This is crazy, what's going on?
Hello, can you people hear us?
We asked if there are any other comments, and we can't, can't hear.
There must be a very terrible lag. Can you hear me now?
Yes. Give about two minutes if you want to add something else.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. You're muted now, Mr. Trebelski.
Okay, so there's a very terrible lag. I spoke, and at least 30 minutes went by after I finished speaking. So we just want to make sure you guys heard.
We heard all of that, yes, we did.
I'm not hearing it.
We heard all the comments.
So they're not gonna hear that for another minute.
All right, I'm going to declare the public hearing closed, and Mr. Murphy? For the planning board. All right, I'm going to declare the public hearing closed, and Mr. Murphy would you give the report to the planning board?
All right, let me go back to the share screen. And, okay. Good evening again, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. Okay, um, yes, this is case W thirty-four eighty-five. The petitioner is the city of Winston-Salem. The site is on the southwest side of Sawmill Road, south of Union Cross Road, located nearest the southeast ward. The request is to change the zoning jurisdiction from Forsyth County RS twenty S and Ag to Winston-Salem RS twenty S and Ag. Uh, this is the subject property highlighted in yellow. Uh, it, this is again located on the southwest side of Sawmill Road, just south of Union Cross Road. Uh, this is the aerial image, um, again showing a lot of wooded area and old farmland. Uh, and it shows a connection, um, it, it basically connects Sawmill Road to another development. Um, uh, Redfern Place, uh, is how that connection will be made. Uh, this item was heard by the planning board at their August twelfth, twenty twenty-one public hearing. Uh, there was one speaker in opposition, uh, but the opposition was to the previously approved zoning case from two thousand and seven. That was actually the, the, the number of folks that were in the Zoom meeting. Uh, we did actually talk to a number of folks in the lobby the day of that meeting, uh, because this was, uh, at a time when we thought we were going to be going back to in-person meetings. And, uh, at the last minute, we had to change back to Zoom because of the rise in COVID cases. But unfortunately, those mail-ins had already gone out, so we had folks that were here. We talked to them in the lobby. We gave them an opportunity to stay and go up to the fifth floor, participate, uh, in the Zoom meeting from there, but they declined and said that they would just go back and participate when it came to council. I'm just saying that just to give a little bit of context. Uh, at the, at their meeting on August twelfth, the planning board did vote nine to zero to recommend approval of this conversion request. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Murphy? Mr. Murphy, is it true that, because of the timeframe since the annexation?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I didn't hear the question.
Is it true that currently there is no zoning on this property since it's been a more than six months since the annexation, or sixty days since the annexation?
That is correct, Mayor.
All right, any other questions, Mr. Murphy? I don't see any, therefore I'll recognize, uh, Councilmember Taylor, if he's ready for a motion.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a few comments before I make this motion.
All right.
I, I do want to say, first of all, I'm extremely sympathetic to the neighbors on this particular issue, because many of them bought their properties thinking they'd be living in the county, living in the country. Uh, they were annexed into the city, uh, some of them, and they're starting to have to deal with the issues surrounding folks who actually live in the city. And that can be very problematic, and I'm, I'm committed to working with them going forward to address some of their, their concerns. Uh, actually, this item, we continue from our previous meeting, because simply I wanted to allow a little bit of time to talk to some of the neighbors and for staff to be able to work with them by email and calls to address some of their questions and concerns. Um, the property before you for rezoning was actually approved, uh, in two thousand and seven by the county commissioners. And essentially, as you've heard, we are just converting the same zoning that was previously approved, uh, by the county to the city, so we're not doing anything that doesn't already currently exist. Um, what concerns me the most about this particular proposal is that if the city were to deny, uh, the zoning conversion request, we'd be left with a property, uh, in the city limits that simply has no zoning at all. And that's where we are, as the mayor just spoke. Uh, this wouldn't stop the subdivision from being built, uh, but it, it would simply allow them to be built without conforming to any of the city's zoning regulations and standards and requirements. Um, I believe that that would be more harmful to the neighbors than anything, because there would be no rules or standards for the developers to abide by. Um, if this request is approved tonight, uh, it gives us the tools in our toolbox to make sure that, number one, uh, the two thousand and seven site plan will be updated to conform to our two thousand and twenty-one U D O requirements. And number two, that the site plan and construction conforms to all of our city Winston-Salem requirements. Uh, if we don't do this, we'll have a residential development with no rules, no standards, and it would do way more damage to the neighborhood, because again, there'd be no regulations for the developers to abide by. I'm committed to working with the neighbors to address their concerns about traffic and some of the development issues, uh, going forward. Um, and with that being said, I move for one, approval of the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and two, W dash three four eight five.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Captain Mayor Protem. Any further discussion on this item? All right, we'll go to the roll call. A yes vote on this simply changes the county zoning to city zoning. Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Monday?
Aye.
Councilmember Cipio?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Thank you. That item is unanimous. Uh, thank you, uh, Councilmember Taylor. We'll go to item, uh, Z, uh, four.
Item Z four, public hearing on zoning petition of Claire Calvin and Matthew Gadingman from LB and LI to PBL. Property is generally bounded by the east side of South Broad Street, the west side of South Poplar Street, and the south side of West Walnut Street, located in the south ward. Planning board recommends approval of petition.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy, is there anyone signed up in opposition to this, uh, item?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm not aware of any opposition for this case.
Thank you. I'll declare the public hearing closed. I'll recognize, uh, Councilmember Larson, if you'd like to move forward or you want a presentation.
We have a brief presentation on this one, a brief presentation.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Murphy?
Okay, can you see my screen?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, yes, this is a petitioner, uh, a petition of Claire Calvin and Matthew Jujingik. Uh, the site is generally bounded by on the east side of South Broad Street, the west side of South Poplar, and the south side of West Walnut Street, located in the south ward. And this is a request to go from, uh, generally used LB and LI to PBL. Uh, this is the, uh, subject property shown on the, uh, county and city growth management area. Uh, this is the subject property shown in yellow, um, again, located on the corner of, uh, Walnut and Broad. Same image highlighted, uh, the same property highlighted, but with the aerial photography included. Uh, this is, uh, looking, uh, across South Broad Street into the site. This is looking south along South Broad Street, site is to the left. Uh, this is looking south also along, uh, South Broad Street, the site is off the frame to the left. And this is looking south along Poplar Street, the site is to the right, uh, of the rezoning sign. And just some additional images. Uh, this is the area plan map. The area plan does recommend, um, that the subject property be institutional, but that was a recognition of the ownership at the time, I believe, being in, um, ownership, uh, of, um, I believe, Old Salem. Uh, the request is consistent with the recommendations of Legacy twenty thirty and the South Central Area Plan update. The proposed PBL zoning is more compatible with the existing zoning and development pattern of the area than the current zoning, um, the, the LI zoning. Uh, the request is consistent with the PB district purpose statement. Uh, this item was heard by the planning board at their September ninth, twenty twenty-one public hearing. Uh, there were no speakers in opposition, and the planning board did, uh, vote nine to nothing to recommend approval of this request. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Are there any questions, Mr. Murphy? Don't see any, uh, so therefore I will recognize Councilmember Larson, if you're ready for a motion, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem, city council members. Uh, this site is a site of the old Cox Roofing Company. It's an industrial site. It's been industrial for a very long time. It sits in a residential area. Old Salem's been looking at that area for quite a while and rezoned much of the area PB. So this, this moving from industrial to pedestrian business is totally compatible with what else is happening in the neighborhood. Therefore, I move approval of, one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and two, W thirty-nine ninety-four.
Second, McIntosh.
Thank you. Motion and second. Any further discussion? All right, we'll then move to the roll call. A yes vote approves this zoning petition. Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Monday?
Aye.
Councilmember Cipio?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Thank you. That is unanimous. Now go to item Z five.
Item Z five, public hearing on zoning petition of Frank Myers Investments LLC from RS nine and LB dash S to HB dash S. Property is located on the west side of University Parkway and the north side of Sunburst South, located in the northeast ward. Planning board recommends approval of petition.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Murphy, is there anyone signed up in opposition to this case?
Mr. Mayor, there's not, but I believe that, uh, City Attorney Carmen is trying to get, uh, get, get your attention.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, uh, Ms. Carmen, I recognize you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just for clarification, the case number for that last case was thirty-four ninety-four. So you all approved W thirty-four ninety-four.
Oh, yeah, for Z four, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. All right, so there's no, oh, in opposition to this case?
That is correct.
I'll therefore, uh, uh, move or close the public hearing. I recognize Councilmember Burke, if you'd like to proceed or if you'd like a presentation.
Um, thank you, uh, Mayor. I'll go ahead and proceed. I move for approval of, one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and, uh, two, W dash thirty-four eighty-nine.
Good. Second, McIntosh.
Motion and second. Any discussion or questions? All right, seeing none, we'll go to the roll call. A yes vote, of course, approves this zoning petition as well. Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Monday?
Aye.
Councilmember Cipio?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Thank you. That item is unanimous. Thank you, Councilmember Burke.
Thank you.
Item Z six.
Item Z six, public hearing on petition of Archie F. Wooton Ayers from RS nine to Orient five dash S. Property is located on the north side of Corners Row Road, between Scotland Ridge Drive and Calvin Road, located in the east ward. Planning board recommends approval of petition.
Thank you. I believe we do have some individuals signed up on this, and Mr. Murphy, if you'd recognize them, and we'll proceed.
Mr. Mayor, that, that is correct. We do have one, uh, one person who's signed up. We also had another, a number of people who jumped on the Zoom call as we were going live, so there could be more than one, but we definitely do have one, uh, person in opposition. So I will call on Tiffany Robbins, if you would unmute yourself and, um, set your name and address for the record and, um, begin your comments.
My name is Tiffany. Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Hey, Chris, we might want to start with, uh, um, proponents, because we got one proponent first.
You are correct. Uh, I apologize on that. I'm just concentrating on the opposition. Uh, Mr. Robbins, if you would, just hold on. Uh, we do have the proponent who is, uh, Sarah Shirley. So, uh, Ms. Shirley, if you would, uh, identify yourself, uh, state your name and address for the record and then begin your comments. I'm sorry. Sure.
Not a problem. Thank you very much for having us here tonight. My name is Sarah Shirley. I'm a senior planner and licensed landscape architect with American Engineering, uh, representing, um, Kyle Di Pretor, who's also on the call tonight. Uh, my address is eight thousand eight Corporate Center Drive, Suite one ten, Charlotte, North Carolina. And I do have a brief presentation, um, if, if someone wouldn't mind bringing that one up. Thank you, Meredith. Uh, you can go to the second slide. So we just wanted to provide this brief presentation in support of what planning staff has put together in the report and also what planning board, uh, showed at the planning board meeting. So as per the southeast suburban small area plan, the area in which Wooton Farms resides was determined to provide intermediate residential density at a rate of eight to eighteen units to the acre. The current zoning, RS nine, would allow for the development of this property up to five units to the acre. Um, but with the proposed Wooton Farms, we are actually proposing a density of two point five units to the acre. So a decrease of what is currently allowed by zoning and what is recommended as per the comprehensive plan. Uh, next slide, please. So on, uh, Monday, August the twenty-third, we actually had a neighborhood meeting. We held it virtually and in person, and, uh, we gathered information and feedback, and there were four main points the neighborhood brought up, and we have addressed them, uh, as, as our plan, as per our plan, and we've gotten supportive documents to help support, uh, the comments and how we've addressed those comments. So for traffic, we've had a traffic impact analysis performed by a licensed transportation engineer, and based on requirements from N C D O T and Winston-Salem's D O T, we will be installing at the developer's expense right and left turn lanes at the intersection with Farmingdale Road. Um, if the right of way exists for Calvin Road, we'll actually also be providing turn lanes there as well. We do have Nick Burns, who's with the, uh, Impact Designs, who perform the traffic impact analysis, available for questions if anybody has any. Um, for schools, the Forsyth County Board of Education actually, uh, provides current enrollment rates for the schools online. And so we've been keeping up with them and keeping up with those online reports. And actually, to the schools to which our property routes, uh, those enrollments have either held steady or decreased over the recent months. For stormwater, uh, there was a concern about making sure that the site addressed any environmental concerns. Uh, the benefit of our site is actually drains internal to the site, to the existing Nichols Lake, and we will be addressing any stormwater, uh, mitigation with stormwater ponds. They are intended to be dry retention basins. Uh, and within the Salem Lake watershed, we are only allowed to develop a maximum of thirty percent of the site using these stormwater control measures. So of the sixty-three acres that make up our site, basically, we're maxing out nineteen acres, uh, for development, available for development. These stormwater areas will be designed and sized by a licensed professional engineer within private, within our private engineering firm, and reviewed and approved by licensed state and local officials. The stormwater areas will be perpetually owned and maintained by the proposed Wooton Farms HOA. We will also be providing perimeter buffering as per the Winston-Salem Land Use Ordinance. The proposed uses are residential in nature, so they're complementary to the existing residential uses that surround our site. The proposed site slopes away from the adjacent properties, internal to Nichols Lake. And the average distance between the external property line for Wooton Farms and adjacent homes ranges anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and thirty feet. Uh, we have a little diagram at the bottom of this page that you can see. Um, we'll have two-story homes that we're proposing for the single-family homes. And because our site actually slopes internal to, and we've done a preliminary grading study, uh, we're actually going to be sunken into the site, and along with that perimeter buffering, we're going to be closing off most of the site, uh, site views from adjacent properties. Next slide, please. So based on the rezoning requested, we are required to build generally what is shown on the submitted plan. This project resides within the growth management area of three for suburban neighborhoods, and market demands recently have been for home buyers who want a high-quality home on a smaller lot, offering less or no exterior maintenance. As part of Wooton Farms, we're proposing to leave a majority of the western portion of the property in existing forest, and portions throughout the remainder of the site will remain forested where trees exist, uh, because most of the land is currently used for farm, uh, for farmland. While the rest of the site will be buffered with proposed large maturing deciduous and evergreen tree, trees. The neighborhood will offer an amenity area and walking trail for the neighborhood. Sidewalks will be provided on both sides of Nichols Lake, uh, road, which runs the, uh, the core of the site, and then on at least one side of the rest of the neighborhood roads. Next slide, please. This is a quick diagram that we put together for cross-section for the road. Even though the front and setback is fifteen feet, we're proposing to commit to twenty feet to make sure that any cars that are parked in the driveway don't overhang the, um, sidewalks. And then last slide. These are just a few examples, um, of homes that we're proposing to put on the site. Single family will be two-story. Townhomes will also be two-story. Single family will offer two-car garages, and the townhomes will offer at least a one-car garage. Um, and with that, my presentation is done. I'll open it up to anybody else who'd like to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shirley. Uh, is anyone else for their proponents would like to be heard? All right, seeing no one, then we'll move to the opposition. Uh, Mr. Murphy, would you introduce, uh, individuals signed up? Like you already did, Ms. Robbins, I believe. If you want to go ahead, Ms. Robbins, you can unmute yourself and, uh, give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, thank you for, uh, letting me speak tonight. My name is Tiffany Robbins. My address is thirty-five ninety-five Kernersville Road, Winston Salem. Um, I am, uh, I guess mainly concerned about it to, about the rezoning. I know that we are talking about tonight rezoning and not necessarily what will be done with the property. Um, my concern to three zoning is what the future plans and what was presented. Uh, I know that she mentioned the schools in the area and about how they've looked at the last few months, but due to COVID, I feel like those numbers are not reliable. I think that they need to look a little further back if they want to, uh, use those numbers to help with their, uh, argument. I also am worried about the stormwater. I am directly beside that property and, um, I know that the city limits me on what I can do in, on my property. And I feel, uh, just, you know, I'm limited due to, you know, protecting the water there in Salem Lake because that, uh, pond over there does run into Salem Lake. And I feel that, uh, even though they have plans for doing the drain water, uh, that, or the stormwater areas, that it's not going to be enough with the pollution so that Salem Lake is, uh, not, you know, negatively affected by the neighborhood. I also am worried about the plans that she showed you guys and that there is a driveway. And where the driveway is, there are about nine houses now, uh, sorry, nine townhouses that are covering that driveway. Um, and so I don't see where, because we mentioned that in the community meeting that she mentioned earlier that we had. And I don't see where they made changes for that driveway. Um, also, uh, there are towers there on that property. And the, uh, the map that they gave us in the community showed houses right on top of those towers. And I'm worried about that as far as it being, um, safe. Uh, because I, I worry about, uh, homes being so close, being literally in the backyard of those towers that, um, it's too accessible for people doing things that are not necessarily smart. Or, you know, any damages to homes or, you know, just being, uh, just being, um, a risk, I guess. Also, lastly, my concern is there's been no communication, uh, with the development and the neighbors that are right beside us, uh, that are right beside the neighborhood that they want to build. Um, this is the first time that I saw their proposed plans in such great detail. Um, and I think that a lot of us neighbors that have talked to each other that are directly beside the land would, uh, appreciate it a little bit more communication. Uh, as far as rezoning, I think that what I would prefer is for the vote to be held off for tonight so that the developer could come talk to us and actual, you know, detail about what they're wanting to do. Uh, so that we can have a better, just a greater knowledge of how it's going to directly affect us.
Thank you, Ms. Robbins. Is there anyone else? Mr. Murphy has signed up.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm not, again, I'm not aware of anyone else who has signed up, but I'll just, I guess we can give a general call out to anyone else who is on the Zoom meeting. If there are folks that, that gather or that joined the meeting as we were beginning who were in opposition to this case, if you would, identify yourself, uh, state your name for the, and, and, and address for the record if there's anyone else in opposition.
Hi, my name is Debbie Blake, and I am at two forty Dumont Drive in Winston Salem, and my property actually backs up to, um, the proposal here on Calvin Road. Um, that they're also looking to try to make as a primary or secondary, um, access road. And this is the biggest complaint that we as our neighbors have had. Um, we understand the need for development, but at the same time, we are not, um, in agreement with having that part of the road opened up. And also I'm a little concerned in that it was a premature that on Friday I happened to be home and the surveyors were down here on our property and had already started putting up states, um, where they were surveying the land and also marked on my property line for water lines. And I actually spoke to the guy who was out here surveying, and he said that he didn't know, um, exactly. He was just doing his job and what he was asked to do, that he was coming out here surveying the land and go ahead and marking the, the, I guess, for the utilities and outlining the property. So it was a little concerning to me that we have not had any communication, as Tiffany just mentioned, from the developer. And I just feel like that it's already a done deal and y'all have not taken into consideration, uh, the petitions that we submitted and our concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Blake. Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard for the opposition? Alright, thank you all very much. Um, we do, we'll give the proponents three minutes for rebuttal. Ms. Shirley, if you'd like to comment on anything.
Absolutely. And I can let, uh, Kyle jump in if he would like to as well. Um, we have worked diligently with the city to address all the comments. And we are required as part of this process, this is just an ask for the use. And after this, we'll go through a lot more diligent, detailed reviews where we have to meet all city ordinance, all state ordinance requirements, um, all county requirements. So it's something that we take very seriously. And we, uh, certainly understand the neighbors' concerns about, you know, changing use, uh, you know, something that was farmland is now getting developed. And, uh, to that, we really feel that we've offered a good solution to that and that what is currently allowable by density is much higher than what we're actually proposing for the site. So we're really hoping to come in respectfully as neighbors and put something in that the city can be proud of. And of, of all the requirements that we are required to meet, we again are working with the city and the county and the states in order to make that happen. Uh, so some of the road improvements are things that we don't have a say in. Uh, we are required to provide them and we will do so. Um, so we are hoping to provide improvements to everything that happens. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else for the proponents?
Yeah, this is Kyle Di Pretor. Yes, sir. This is Kyle Di Pretor. I'm the developer and, and thank you guys for your time tonight. We very much appreciate it. I just want to address a couple of comments that were made and, and, um, just offer, you know, our, um, perspective on that. So a couple of things, we mentioned, uh, the transmission lines. Obviously, those are Duke's transmission lines. We'll have to adhere very strictly to their easements. Uh, the way that we have it designed, we're well outside of, uh, putting anybody in harm's way. We certainly would never do that. And Duke would never allow for us to do that. Um, we're only allowed to cross those easements at a ninety-degree angle with our roads, which is how we have it shown now. Um, this is fairly customary. We've seen, uh, residential communities that are developed that have overled, overhead transmission lines that, uh, cross them. Um, we have several properties that we've done this in the past and that we are looking to do currently. So I wanted to address that concern. Stormwater, um, certainly people a lot smarter than me will be working on engineering and design to make sure that we have, um, all the necessary documentation and adherence to all the protocols, especially in the watershed for Salem Lake. Uh, we know how important that is and obviously it's, it's drinking water and all those things. So, um, we'll be, uh, adhering to even more stringent policy than we would normally, uh, in those circumstances. It'll be months worth of permitting and calculations and, um, all those types of things. So I just want to make sure that nobody has any concerns related to stormwater because there will be efforts made not only by our professionally licensed engineers that have to put their stamp on it and their own liability on that, but also the professionally licensed engineers that work for the city and actually represent the city's best interest and make sure that those things are taken care of properly.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Your, your three minutes is up. So, thank you for your comment. Alright, we'll go back to the opposition. Uh, Ms. Robbins and Ms. Blake, if you'd like to add anything in three minutes?
May I go? This is Tiffany Robbins.
Yes, go.
Okay, just real quickly, um, I appreciate, uh, the talking and addressing some of the concerns. I would still ask, uh, you guys to vote to put off the, the vote for what the decision as far as rezoning would be until, uh, as neighbors, we have more time. I would love for the developers to come and talk to us and give us a little bit more details. Um, like I said, uh, at the town community, we talked about how their houses are right over the driveway and tonight it wasn't addressed. It was still over there. So it worries me that, um, some plans are moving forward that are still big red flags for us because there's nine houses over that driveway. Um, and so they're not going to have any access to their home. Also, uh, I guess I'm just worried about the environment. I know that he said that he'll have engineers and whatnot, but it is home to wildlife. I know that as neighbors, we'd love a park. I don't think that City of Winston is inclined for that, but that's something that I know, talking to the neighbors, we'd love to have a park with all the hundreds of houses that are over here because people want access to that pond. So. Sorry, I'm done.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Robbins. And Ms. Blake, did you want to add anything?
No, I mean, there's nothing else really else that I can add that's not already been said or identified in the other two meetings that we've had. And I appreciate everybody's, you know, um, input. And I just hope that y'all will seriously consider the request that, you know, that has been mentioned tonight for us opposing these changes.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Blake. Uh, I will therefore close the public hearing and I'd ask for the, uh, report of the planning board, please. Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yes, uh, this is case W thirty-four ninety-three. Again, the petitioner is the RTF Wooton Heirs. Uh, the property is, uh, sixty-four acres approximately located on the north side of Kernersville Road between Scotland Ridge Drive and Calvin Road, located in the east ward. Uh, the request is for special use district rezoning from RS nine to RM five, RM five S for a mixture of single-family homes and townhouses. Uh, here the, uh, is the subject property labeled, uh, shown in the suburban neighborhood's growth management area. Here is the subject property, uh, shown in yellow, again, on the north side of Kernersville Road in between, uh, Calvin Road and, uh, Scotland Ridge Drive, again, on the north side of Kernersville Road. Here is the subject property outlined in yellow on the aerial photography. You'll see, uh, some of the existing development patterns. Uh, you've got, um, the, uh, older existing neighborhood to the east and then further to the east and to the north. Northeast is Vernon Farms and you have some existing development to, uh, the west. Again, it shows the existing pond on this agricultural property. Uh, this is the subject property from Kernersville Road. Uh, there are the Duke Power, um, transmission, uh, towers that have been mentioned, uh, by, uh, the speakers tonight. Uh, again, this is on Kernersville Road. Uh, the site is to the left, so this is looking east towards Kernersville. Uh, this is Kernersville Road. The site is to the right. This is looking, uh, west back towards, uh, the city Winston Salem. See the zoning, uh, sign there on the image. Uh, this is the proposed connection, uh, Calvin and Community Road. The site is to the left. Uh, there is a condition of approval on Calvin Road to, uh, widening, uh, widen Calvin Road from thirteen, thirteen and a half feet from centerline with curb and gutter. Um, and I believe a sidewalk. So that is a condition of approval that's within your packet. Uh, this is the, uh, subject property outlined, overlaid on the area plan map. And again, as, uh, the, uh, petitioner showed in her presentation, the recommended density in the area plan for this, um, property is intermediate density of between eight and eighteen units per acre. This is the site plan. Uh, this image is turned. Uh, so Kernersville Road is to the left of this image. Calvin Road is to the bottom. Um, and, uh, as far as the site plan features, again, there are ninety-one single-family homes and sixty-nine townhomes on this, uh, approximately sixty-four acres. So it's a little over two and a half units per acre. Uh, under the existing zoning, uh, there could be, uh, probably two-hundred-and-fifty, I believe, roughly, uh, single-family homes, maybe a little bit more than that. Again, this is located within the watershed, so there is thirty percent maximum coverage. Um, low density is compatible with the area. Under this proposal, there is less traffic than allowed under the current RS nine zoning if it were to be developed, uh, for a standard subdivision. Uh, the, uh, there are conditions of approval related to, uh, improvements along Kernersville Road. And there will be sidewalk and street trees along, uh, the both sides of the, the main spine road in this development. And as I mentioned earlier, there are some planned improvements along Calvin Road as a condition of approval as well. Again, you saw some of the building elevations that were included in the proponents', uh, presentation. Uh, these are just, that was just some, uh, images of the townhomes, uh, since we don't generally consider, uh, single-family homes, elevations of those as part of a rezoning request. In summary, uh, the request is lower density and fewer, fewer units than what the present zoning would allow and what is recommended in the southeast suburban area plan update. Uh, the, 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 the need for the rezoning request to the RM five is to provide the attached product type, which isn't allowed in straight RS nine zoning. Uh, but again, the density is less than what is allowed under general use RS nine. So therefore it should generate significantly less trips than what could be expected under the RS nine zoning, uh, twenty-nine hundred trips versus nine fifteen based on the, the unit mix and number. It does include a variety of housing types and there will be traffic improvements along Kernersville Road through the conditions of approval. This case was heard by the planning board at their September ninth, twenty-twenty-one public hearing. There were five speakers in opposition. Uh, most spoke on topics related to traffic along Kernersville Road and issues with Vernon Farms. One speaker did speak in opposition to the townhome portion of the proposed project. After, uh, having the public hearing, the planning board did vote nine to nothing to recommend approval of this request. And the site plan does meet UDO requirements. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Are there any questions? Uh, Mr. Murphy? Uh, Councilman Cipio have a question?
Uh, it may not be to Mr. Murphy, but I had, uh, for this, um, petition, uh, most of the community opposition dealt with Kernersville Road. Uh, which when you look at, uh, the surrounding developments that's happened on Kernersville Road, it's a lot of density and nothing has ever been done to Kernersville Road itself. Uh, and I believe I've asked DOT, uh, to talk about doing a traffic study and how do we help the residents along Kernersville Road have access? Because when people are on, on Kernersville Road, it goes and there's no stopping, no stoplights or anything there. So you can leave from, um, Five Points and High Point Road down near the Wendy's and go all the way out to Linville Road. And if there's traffic, you have to wait. Uh, so, um, Mr. King, is, um, Ms. Tonika on the line tonight? She was going to speak about what we can do around the traffic issue.
Mr. King?
Uh, I'm sorry, Mayor. Uh, Councilman Cipio, uh, Ms. McCullough and I spoke about this this morning and I know that is on her radar. She's aware of the issues out there. Um, we'd like to have some time to kind of talk about that and hopefully follow up with you in a week or so to kind of start looking about, get an idea on what that would look like and how we could go about pursuing that.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, if there are no other questions, I would recognize Councilwoman Cipio for a motion. Is she's ready?
I have a question.
Oh, um.
Too late. Okay, oh, never mind.
Public hearing is over. Go ahead, Councilman Cipio.
Um, and it's really critical, uh, that we, uh, want to do a comment before I make the motion, Mr. Mayor, if I can. Um, again, Kernersville Road is the main problem with any developer coming into this area. But one of the things that is very important for us to understand is that this development is one, is within our qualified census tract for the east ward. Um, one of those tracts that needs to grow with greater income. This development is bringing homeownership, which requ, which then makes neighborhoods stable. It also brings townhomes, which gives younger owners some options to start having equity in their own income base. So I love that. I love the fact that developers have worked with the neighborhoods. I did attend the, uh, community outreach. We had over thirty people there who voiced their opinions about this development. Most of those objections had to do with the traffic on Kernersville Road. objections had to do with the traffic on Kernersville Road. And as you've already heard, our requirements for developments in the city are really stiff when it comes to stormwater management, environmental issues. So I'm very confident that we will certainly have those taken care of with this developer. Change is difficult for people. Most of those neighborhoods right around this development were people who've lived there. Those are farmlands. This is a farm that the owners have chosen to sell. And with that property coming, it comes development. And it's sort of difficult for people to accept that kind of change. But we do need more housing in our city. We need better housing in the East Ward. We need to have ownership in these qualified census tracts. So with that, I move for approval of the statement of consistency for approval of this item and to W. 3493.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, McIntosh.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing now, a yes vote approves this rezoning. Councilor Larson?
Yes.
Councilor Clark?
Yes.
Councilor Monday?
Aye.
Councilor Sipio?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Adams?
Yes.
Councilor Taylor?
No.
Councilor McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilor Burke?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes seven to one. Thank you, Councilor Sipio. Item Z7.
Item Z7, Public Planning Ordinance Amendment Chapter 5 and 11 of the Unified Development Ordinance to Advise Use Specific Standards for Storage Services, Retail, and Definitions, UDO CC11. Planning Board Recommends Proof of Petition Recommended by Community Development, Housing, and General Government Committee.
I understand that Ms. Amy Crum is going to present the item for us. We'll do that before we have the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor Joines, Mayor Proton Adams, and members of council. I'll be presenting UDO CC11. Planning and Development Services staff is requesting to amend Sections 5 and 11 of the UDO to revise use standards for storage services retail. Next slide. Over the past few years, staff has seen an increase in requests for self-storage buildings, especially those that have internal access. Internal access facilities have become the dominant self-storage model in many communities, and many are actually located near neighborhoods. As part of its review of these facilities, the planning board has often recommended design modifications to help these projects better fit in with the character of surrounding neighborhoods. Next slide. The planning board asked staff to develop basic ordinance standards for these facilities to, one, better reflect expectations for such projects, and, two, to reduce the negotiation required for individual projects. Based on research of peer communities and best practices for self-storage facilities, staff is proposing different standards for external access and internal access storage facilities. These amended standards will not affect existing facilities and will only apply to new development. Next slide, please. For external access facilities, these are your traditional storage facilities that are usually one-story. Units are accessed via the exterior from roll-up doors. Outdoor storage for properties such as RVs and boats is allowed with these facilities, but must be screened from view in the HB and GB zoning districts. Hazardous material storage is prohibited with these types of developments. Next slide, please. Internal access are typically multi-story buildings where the storage units are accessed from the interior through doors and corridors. Exterior storage is not allowed with this use. Specific siding materials such as stone and brick and architectural detailing are proposed for this use. Windows and transparency are proposed along public-facing facades, and building facades must be articulated to avoid long uninterrupted walls and to improve compatibility with neighborhoods. Next slide. This amendment proposes allowing internal access storage in the GO, LB, and MRBS zoning districts, given as this use has similar impacts to other uses currently allowed in these districts. Internal access storage in the PB and LB districts would be allowed, but only with a special use permit from these elected body, and a mix of non-residential uses would be required along the street level right of way in these districts. Next slide. Staff believes that these proposed revisions will provide clarity in the project review process and reduce the need for the design of such projects to be negotiated on an individual basis. Proposed standards for internal access buildings, including building material requirements, will enhance the compatibility of these projects with surrounding businesses and neighborhoods. Next slide, please. The planning board recommended approval of the UDO CC11 with an eight to one vote at their June 2021 work session. The item was heard at the General Government Housing Committee on September 14th and received a unanimous recommendation for approval. With that, I will answer any questions.
Ms. Crum, are there any questions? Ms. Crum? All right, seeing no one, we'll go to the public hearing. Mr. Murphy, is anyone signed up for this one?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not aware of anyone who has signed up for this item, either proponent or opposition.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. I'll therefore close the public hearing. Mayor Proton Adams, this did come from your committee, so I would like to recognize you if you're ready for a motion.
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mayor. I move for, one, approval of the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and, two, approval of agenda item Z7.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is second. Any further discussion? Seeing now, when we go to roll call, a yes vote does approve this UDO amendment. Councilor Larson?
Yes.
Councilor Clark?
Yes.
Councilor Monday?
Aye.
Councilor Sipio?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Adams?
Yes.
Councilor Taylor?
Yes.
Councilor McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilor Burke?
Yes.
Thank you. That is unanimous. We'll now go to item Z8.
Item Z8, Public Planning Ordinance Amendment Chapter 6 and Chapter 11 of Unified Development Ordinance to Modify the Change Rate of Electronic Message Board Signs to Add Brightness Limitments to the Regulation of Electronic Message Board Signs and Extend Amortization Period by Two Years to Bring Non-Conforming On-Premises Signs Into Compliance, UDO CC14. Planning Board Recommends Proof of Petition Recommended by Community Development, Housing, and General Government Committee.
Thank you. Steve Smotherman is going to make this presentation. Mr. Smotherman, we'll do that before the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Proton, and council members. This request is a text amendment proposed to address city council concerns that are related to the change rate for electronic message signs, the brightness of electronic message signs, and the amortization period of signs which do not meet the standards of the 2007 sign ordinance, specifically on-premises freestanding signs. Next slide, please. Council has heard from business owners that the current rate of change provisions for electronic message signs are too restrictive and that financial challenges related to replacing non-conforming signs by June of next year have arisen as a result of the pandemic. And council has also heard some citizen complaints related to the brightness of electronic message boards at night, particularly those near residential neighborhoods. Next slide, please. This amendment proposes reducing the maximum change rate for electronic message signs from once every two hours to once every two minutes. This change would allow greater flexibility for sign ordinance, for sign owners, but also still provide an attractive streetscape. And the change rate will also be easier for staff to verify and enforce because instead of having to wait two hours for the sign to change, you'll have to wait a couple minutes. Next slide, please. The proposed electronic message sign brightness standards are taken from those requirements of Charlotte Ashland High Point, and the maximum brightness levels shall not exceed 5,000 nits during daylight hours and 500 nits at night. And that all signs shall have a light sensing device that will adjust the sign brightness in real time as the actual ambient light conditions change. And there's also requirement that the sign contractor shall certify in writing that the installed sign meets all these brightness regulations prior to the final field inspection. Next slide, please. As far as the amortization period, the amendment proposes that for on-premises freestanding signs made non-conformant by the provision of the comprehensive 2007 sign ordinance shall have two additional years to come into compliance. They will have till June 30th, 2024, rather than June 30th of next year. And again, that extension was recommended by the Community Development, Housing, and General Government Committee to accommodate the hardships faced by business owners and give them time to find the resources to make those changes. Next slide, please. The UDO was recommended for approval by the planning board at its August 12th meeting by an eight to one vote, and the Community Development, Housing, and General Government Committee heard this at their, like the previous text amendment at their September 14th meeting, and recommended approval also by unanimous vote. Next slide. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Smotherman. Any questions, Mr. Smotherman? Mr. McIntosh?
I just wanted to ask Mr. Smotherman to sort of run down why it's important not to just allow electronic signs to change over very rapidly. What's the idea behind a two-minute, two-hour conversion rate?
Well, the, actually, the two-minute rate was what was originally proposed back in 2007. But there's a concern, like for some signs that change maybe every few seconds, you don't want it changing too rapidly so it would keep distracting drivers. But also, some of them change so infrequently that I don't think it really impacts, you know, provides a distraction for drivers. So we surveyed other cities, and they run the gamut from once every two to three seconds to eight seconds to four to six hours. So we think this is.
We don't want people, we don't want people to see a flashing sign and draw their attention away from their iPhone as they're driving down the street.
That's correct. We want them to be able to focus on the iPhone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McIntosh. So Mayor Proton Adams, do you have a question?
Yes. Mr. Smotherman, are there any that you know of requirements for the NIT compliance besides flashing signs? We're seeing a lot of very, very, very bright lights in our communities for businesses in the urban core. And I was wondering, and maybe you can't answer that, but if you would look into that for me, please, because I am getting some concerns from neighborhoods.
The, for the electronic message signs, there's, there is, there are devices that can measure the actual luminance from the sign. So that, if we get questions of enforcement, you can purchase what's called a NIT gun for anywhere from $1,000, $5,000, and it can measure the luminance. Now, that is different from some other light sources. That's measuring the sign directly. If lights are shining on neighbors' properties and things like that, that is a slightly different issue, and that would need to be measured by a different type of gun or measure.
Thank you, Ms. Smotherman. Any other questions, Mr. Smotherman? All right, this is a public hearing. Do we have anyone who's signed up for this one?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not aware of anyone who's signed up as a proponent or opponent.
All right, thank you. I'll therefore close the public hearing. Again, Mayor Proton, this did come through your committee. I'd recognize you for a motion if you're ready.
Yes, I'm ready. I move for approval of the statement of consistency for approval of this item and, two, approval of agenda item Z8.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, thank you very much. Any further discussion? All right, a yes vote approves this UDO amendment relative to the sign ordinance. Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilor Clark?
Yes.
Councilor Monday?
Aye.
Councilor Sipio?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Adams?
Yes.
Councilor Taylor?
Yes.
Councilor McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilor Burke?
Yes.
Thank you. That is unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Smotherman. Item Z9?
Item Z9, Public Attorney on Resolution Authorizing Amendment to the Truist Stadium Lease Agreement with Winston-Salem Dash LLC and its affiliates, recommended by Finance Committee.
Well, ask Mr. Ben Ralph to give us just a very brief summary of this changes to the lease agreement before we go to vote in a public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor Joines, Mayor Proton, Corey Adams, and members of the city council. On February 1st, the mayor and the council approved a new lease agreement with Winston-Salem Dash Truist Stadium. At that time, the lease payment was significantly reduced from a little over $1.5 million to $750,000. After that, there was some discussions as work began on the actual lease agreement and the amended and restated incentives agreement. And so subsequently, another item came forward to you all to make some additional modifications to the agreement. Among those included, adjusting the letter of credit to bring it more in line with the actual lease payments that the team would pay, some additional language regarding compliance with laws and baseball rules, some language related to insurance requirements, and clarification about the city's responsibilities for facility upgrades, both those required by the professional development license and also for health and safety upgrades. So this item came forward to committee last month with approval from Finance Committee. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Ralph? We have talked about this quite a bit in various committees. All right, this is a public hearing. Ms. Martin, anyone signed up? Thank you. I'll therefore declare the public hearing closed. I'd recognize Councilor Clark, chairman of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. As Mr. Ralph just said, we approved this back in February. These are basically just some tweaks between the city and Major League Baseball and some other parties involved. So with that, I will move approval.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Thank you. A yes vote does approve this new lease agreement with the baseball team. Councilor Larson?
Yes.
Councilor Clark?
Yes.
Councilor Monday? Councilor Monday?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilor Sipio?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Adams?
Yes.
Councilor Taylor?
Yes.
Councilor McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilor Burke?
Yes.
Thank you. That is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Ralph, for all your hard work on this. Item Z10?
Item Z10, Resolution Ratifying the City's Vote in Favor of Northwest Child Development Centers, Chapter 11, Frank Rupstein Reorganization Plan.
Recognize city attorney, Ms. Carmen, if you could give us just a brief summary of what this action entails.
Sure, I'd be happy to. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Proton Adams and council members. Before I start on this item, just real quick on item number nine, your vote to approve that item also included an amendment to the amended and restated incentives agreement. Just wanted to make you sure that it's the lease and the incentives agreement. With respect to item number 10, what you have before you is a resolution ratifying the vote in favor of the Chapter 11 Reorganization Plan. the vote in favor of the Chapter 11 reorganization plan of Northwest Child Development Center. As you may recall from earlier communications, the property on Pittsburgh Avenue was returned to both the city and the county, so the property is basically in our hands now. And so this is with respect to the deed to trust that was on the property. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Ms. Carmen? All right, see, Mayor Protem Adams, go ahead.
Yes, Attorney Carmen. In the action request form, it talks about the loan of $17,000 for repairs. Were any repairs ever done to the property? I mean, I, I've known the property since I've lived in the area, since it stopped providing childcare. But did anybody do any repairs after that loan that we know of?
It's my understanding that repairs were made at that time, but the property is currently in a state of disrepair and probably because of the lack of use and some other issues. But it's my understanding that at the time of the loan, some repairs were made pursuant to the loan. But I'll be happy to verify that with staff and if I find otherwise, let you all know.
And so the city and the county both share the property again?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions from Ms. Carmen? Ms. Clark?
Yeah, are we looking to sell this property or how are we going to dispose of it?
I'm not sure. It's my understanding from the city manager and others that there may be another nonprofit interested in the property, but I'll defer to the manager with respect to that question.
Good evening. Yeah, we've had, we've had some overtures from the Boston Thurmond Initiative about potentially using it. So, and I believe the county is intending, Ms. Carmen, to transfer the title to us completely. Isn't that what they've indicated?
There have been discussions about that. It's my understanding the county commissioners have not approved that yet. It's my understanding.
I would certainly recommend we, we go add it because vacant buildings do disintegrate from lack of tender loving care on them. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we entertain a motion to approve this ratification of the-
I move for, I move for approval of this item. I don't know the number. What is it? Z? Z ten.
Second. Second. Any further discussion on this? All right, a yes vote approves this ratification of the bankruptcy reorganization plan. Councilwoman Larson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Monday?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cipio?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Adams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Burke?
Yes.
Thank you. That is unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Carmen. Item Z eleven?
Item Z eleven, resolution establishing an open nonpartisan and participatory process for the 2021 redistricting of Winston-Salem City Council.
We did receive a, a letter from the League of Women Voters and of course, we, we responded to, we typically do very open process anyway, but we're happy to do this resolution. I would entertain a motion on this.
An approval approved.
Thank you. Any further discussion on it? All right, a yes vote approves this resolution endorsing an open and participatory nonpartisan process for our redistricting. Councilwoman Larson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Monday?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cipio?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Adams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Burke?
Yes.
Thank you. That is unanimous.
Mayor, may I make a comment? In general government next week, the planning department will present the presentation of where we are with the census data, what we have presently, and how, what our process will probably be with the timeline.
Thank you, Mayor. All right. We have some appointments. Item Z twelve?
Item Z twelve, Mayor Joins' recommendation for appointment of the citizens' bond oversight committee, Michael P. Wakeford, coming from its by March 2022.
Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Clark. Any discussion? A yes vote approves the appointment of Mr. Wakeford. Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Monday?
Aye.
Ms. Cipio?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. McIntosh?
Aye.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Thank you. That is unanimous. Item Z thirteen?
Item Z thirteen, Mayor Joins' recommendation for appointment of citizens' police review board, Christian J. Beatty, term experience April 2023.
Is there a motion? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? A yes vote does approve Mr. Beatty to the Assistant Police Review Board. Councilwoman Larson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Monday?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cipio?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Adams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Burke?
Yes.
Thank you. That is unanimous. Councilmembers, we do have a need for a brief closed session involving some property in the northeast ward, and for that respect, I would recognize Councilwoman Burke and ask her for a motion.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I move that the Winston-Salem City Council go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318 dot 11, A three and A five to consult with and provide instructions to the city attorney and staff regarding Forsyth County versus Visions Entertainment ET dot AL dot 12 CVD 2934, a tax foreclosure action involving property located at 1712 North Liberty Street and to protect the attorney-client privilege. Thank you.
Is there a second? Thank you. All right, a yes vote approves that's going into a closed session. Councilwoman Larson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark? Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
And Councilwoman Burke?
Yes.
All right, thank you. That's unanimous to go into closed session. Hang on, and we'll move that way. All right, thank you. That's unanimous to go into closed session. Hang on, and we'll move that way.
Recording in progress.
I think everybody is back on. Councilmembers, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Nope. Oh, God, excuse me. Cindy, just remind me, got a motion to end the closed session.
Move to end closed session?
Thank you. All those in favor of ending the closed session, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed to ending the closed session, say no. All right, now we're back into open session, and now I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn. All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed to adjourning, please say no. That's unanimous to adjourn. Thank you, councilmembers. We adjourned.